Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Canton City Council. Council members, please make sure that you have your earbuds in. And if everyone in the audience could please turn your cell phones to vibrate. And we are encouraging social distancing here in council chambers. With a quorum being present, the Chair calls this meeting of Canton City Council to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Smucker.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Shulman.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Scaglio.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Paul. Muriel.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Twelve present, Mr. President.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Council Member-at-Large Christine Shulman. If you would all please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and continue to remind us that all we do today, all we accomplish is for the service and betterment of our community. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a slight delay. Thank you, Member Shulman. We are now under Agenda Corrections and Changes. Leader.
Move Rule 22A be suspended to add second readings of ordinances 16 to 20 to this evening's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend Rule 22A to add second readings to ordinances 16 through 20 to this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. Rule call vote, please.
That's not 16 to 20. That would be 21 to 25, please. Second reading ordinance.
Good.
I apologize. Please change this to 21, 25.
Second.
And once again, it's been moved and seconded to suspend Rule 22A to add second readings to ordinances 21 through 25 to this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Clerk.
Smucker. Aye. Babcock.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglio.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Paul. Muriel.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, Mr. President.
The motion carries and ordinances 21 through 25 are a legal party or agenda. We are now under public hearings and we have none for this evening. We are now under old business and there is no old business for this evening. We are now under public speaks. And we have two speakers for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Kimberly Bell.
Hello, Kimberly Bell.
Ms. Bell, could you... Oh, sorry. By all means.
135 Seventeenth Street, Canton, Ohio.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
You're welcome. I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I don't have much to complain about today. But I want, as you noticed, I pledged allegiance now. Everybody's been mad for the last four years. But now I stand up and I salute my flag and say, give my honor to the flag. Before I wasn't. Last year, I didn't... I was... Everybody was angry last year, the last four years. But I got a question, and I know you can't answer this, but last year I was complaining about all the money, then the millions of dollars that's on this paper that we come in and we see where the city is spending all this money. And not one dollar goes to anything I spoke about with helping with jobs and the gun violence. There was two gun incidents over the weekend by my house during the holiday. One on 12th and Logan, 12th and Plain by drive-through, and another one on 30th Street. And we got this big thing coming with the Hall of Fame Village in the Centennial Plaza. And you think the tourists that's going to come in this city and feel safe being that they know of the gun violence every week that we have? That's a pet peeve mine and guns. I mean, I have five grandkids and I have one-nail child. And that gun violence scares me. And I hear it all night by my house. I live right downtown in the city. I don't hear it every night, but I hear it a lot. But we need to find something, some kind of employment. I have a cleaning business. Help me expand my cleaning business. I don't mind employing people that's coming out of the prison system. Been there, done that. I would love to expand my cleaning business and give these people that are coming out of the system a chance. Somebody gave me a chance. That's why I'm where I'm at now. But they need a chance too. My niece, she's coming home soon. I'm still today, from things that happened back in the late 90s, is still affecting my me finding housing and a good job. And it's been over 15 years, and I still feel the pain from those convictions. And nobody wants to sometimes give me that chance. But I'll talk about it next time.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. And our last speaker for this evening is Ms. Skylark Bruce. Ms. Bruce, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
My name is Skylark Bruce, and I live at 1242 Worley Avenue Northwest. At the end of the Canton City Council meeting two weeks ago, three council members closed by pleading with anyone who would listen that the coronavirus is real and is to be taken seriously. I completely agree, which is why my life looks dramatically different today than it did a year ago. If I can help it, the crushing surge on hospitals won't be me or anyone that I sent there. But here is the irony. Viruses are invisible to our eyes. We trust those who know what they're looking at under microscopes to reveal the impact of viruses and bacteria to us. Another thing that is commonly invisible is institutional racism. Just as many people claim that that is a hoax or a version of mind control. If it's not blazing on the lawn and across shape, it can't be racism, many say. If it doesn't have the shape of a noose up high on a tree, it's not deadly to black people, many say. If it's not a literacy test or a poll tax, it can't limit voting, they say. Black people are the experts on how institutional racism affects them far more negatively than anybody else. They are the scientists observing the patterns and reporting to the rest of us what is wrong. The system is meant to be invisible to those it benefits. Racism is sneaky, like a virus. The experts, black people, have told us, white folks, what is wrong and how those of us who are white people can make progress towards fixing it. If we decide we don't care, that's going down in history. No one regarded as our cultural heroes now got there by sitting in meetings and listening half-heartedly to members of the public. It takes courage and daring to do the unprecedented. City council members can take concrete steps, like pushing for NICS to six to reduce police brutality, supporting individual liability insurance for officers, and making sure no city employees are guilty of providing poor service to black people. Codes that disproportionately damage black people can be changed. Ignoring COVID-19 does not make it disappear. Same with the racism that is baked into our systems. It takes purposeful effort over time. I know most of you don't have what it takes, but I'm glad to be surprised. Black lives matter.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. We are now under informal resolutions, and we have 10 for this evening. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 60 by title?
Authorizing Director's Service Director to open one or more purchase orders in total amount not to exceed $17,041 for the purchase of six additional tough pads for CMMS implementation, Water Department.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move... I move we adopt Resolution Number 60.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 60. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 60 is adopted. Resolution Number 61, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. Don Tarver to Board of Building Appeals commencing 1121 through 123123.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 61.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 61. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 61 is adopted. Resolution Number 62, please.
Confirming reappointment of Ms. Lisa Sins to Canton Construction Board commencing 1121 through 123123.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 62.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 62. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 62 is adopted. Resolution Number 63, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. Stuart Kraft to Canton Construction Board commencing 1121 through 123123.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 63.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 63. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 63 is adopted. Resolution Number 64, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. Don Angus to Stark County Regional Planning Commission commencing 1121 through 123122.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 64.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 64. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 64 is adopted. Resolution Number 65, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. Ernie Schott to Fair Housing Commission commencing 1121 through 123125.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 65.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 65. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 65 is adopted. Resolution Number 66, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. Henry Renfro to Fair Housing Commission commencing 1121 through 123125.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 66.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 66. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 66 is adopted. Leader.
Mr. President...
Oh, I'm sorry. My jumping gun here. Resolution Number 67, please.
Confirming reappointment of Mr. William Jones to Fair Employment Practices Board commencing 1121 through 123122.
Leader, Smucker.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 67.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 67. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 67 is adopted. Resolution Number 68, please.
Confirming reappointment of Ms. Virginia Jeffreys to Fair Employment Practices Board commencing 1121 through 123122.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution Number 68.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 68. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 68 is adopted. Resolution Number 69, please.
Confirming reappointment of Ms. Levy Haley to Fair Employment Practices Board commencing 1121 through 123122.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution Number 69.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt informal Resolution Number 69. Are there any remarks? Hearing none. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 69 is adopted. We are now under Communications. Let the Journal show that all communications received is read. We are now under ordinances and formal resolutions for their first reading. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance number one?
Ordnance amending appropriation ordinance number 592020, declaring same to be an emergency referred to finance. Number two, an ordinance adopting temporary appropriations for the operating capital expenditures of City of Canton, Ohio for fiscal year 2021, and declaring same to be an emergency referred to finance. Number three, an ordinance amending ordinance number 12011 has amended to remove the director of planning from the mayor's office management and non-bargaining classification plan, placing it into a newly created Department of Planning and Zoning, and add to the newly created Department of Planning and Zoning the position of planning administrator. Amending ordinance is number 42,000, has amended to update bargaining unit classification plan for the Division of Community and Economic Development and Planning Management. Safety Directors Department of Code Enforcement establishing the classification plan for bargaining unit personnel for the Department of Planning and Zoning, declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to personnel and finance. Number four, an ordinance authorized Canton annex territory known as 3,008 Street Northeast Annexation Area, containing approximately 1.745 acres, more or less assigning said territory as I-1 light industrial, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to annexation. Number five, an ordinance approving and accepting replat of lots 35841, 35842, 35843, declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number six, an ordinance approving and accepting replat of lots 2416 and 2417, declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number seven, ordinance amending ordinance number 682019, classification plan for management and non-bargaining unit personnel, declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to personnel and finance. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing appropriate point of authority during calendar year 2021 to sell city-owned personal property which is not needed for public use or is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to ORC 721.15D, declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to finance and public property capital improvement. Number nine, ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to advertise, see bids, award, and enter into contract for the purchase of one small packer, one boom loaded truck, and one roll-off truck for the sanitation department, or to alter until we purchase said vehicle pursuant to any determined process authorized by law, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public property capital improvement and finance. Number 10, ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to advertise, see bids, award, and execute a construction contract for building a new coordination building for the lagoons at the Canton Water Department Sugar Creek Water Treatment Plant, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and environmental public utilities. Number 11, ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service to execute a professional services contract with Burgess and Noble, amount not to exceed $50,000 for design of the Brentwood interior tank painting project, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and environmental public utilities. Number 12, an ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service execute change order number two and final with HM Miller Construction Company, in the amount not to exceed $26,671.55 for the Forest Street Southwest Sewer Reef Location Project, GP 1303, retroactively authorizes all access taken prior to the finalization of said change order to facilitate the project, authorizing the hour to pay any more obligations related, same and declaring same to be an emergency. Refer to finance and environmental public utilities. Number 13, ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service execute change order number three and final with SCT Inc., in the amount not to exceed $17,047.17 for the faucet court Northwest Drainage Project, GP 1300, retroactively authorizes all access taken prior to the finalization of said change order to facilitate the project, authorizing the hour to pay any more obligations related, same and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 14, ordinance authorizing mayor-director public service execute change order number two and final with First Choice Electric Solutions LLC, in the amount not to exceed $6,317.76 for the East Tuscarus Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Project, GP 1316, retroactively authorizes all access taken prior to the finalization of said change order, facilitate project, authorizing the hour to pay any more obligations related, same and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 15, ordinance authorizing consenting to the installation of reflective pavement markers along US 62, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 16, ordinance amending appropriation ordinance number 592020, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Number 17, an ordinance vacating a portion of Robin Court Southeast, approving and accepting the replat of part of outlots 297, 305, 306, and 307, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 18, ordinance approving and accepting replat of lots 41838, 41839, and outlot 991, declaring same to be an emergency, refer to public safety and thoroughfares. Number 19, ordinance authorizing the mayor-director public service to authorize payment to Deborah Houtshell for 10 days of unused vacation in calendar year 2020, exempting the timeframe requirements of Canton Codified Ordinance Section 151.07H, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance and personnel. Number 20, an ordinance authorizing settlement of Samuel Jones versus City of Canton, ETA L, and declaring same to be an emergency, refer to finance. Mr. President.
At this time, the Chair would declare an in-house recess for finance, public safety, and thoroughfares, and personnel committees to meet in regards to ordinances 16 through 20 on your agenda this evening. You are now in recess.
Mr. President.
Member Muriel.
It is 7:23. We'll call finance to order. We have ordinance number 16, and ordinance amending appropriation ordinance number 59/2020, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council?
Yes.
What you have in front of you on ordinance number 16 is an additional appropriation request for the Urban TIP Fund. When we initially budgeted this money for the beginning of the year, we were $3,878.51 short of the amount we needed for the year. So I'm asking for that amount in appropriations.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? Hearing none. We'll sign it out. Move on to ordinance number 20, an ordinance authorizing settlement of Samuel Jones V... or I'm sorry, Samuel Jones, the City of Canton, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you had the executive session about this settlement. I do think it is a fair settlement and would serve the city well. I think taking it further would only cost more money, but I'll take any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Hearing none. We'll sign it out. Thank you all, Director. Good work on this.
Thank you.
That concludes finance at 7:25. We'll go into finance and personnel at 7:25. We have ordinance number 19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor-director public service to authorize payment to Deborah Houtshell for 10 days of unused vacation in calendar year 2020, exempting the timeframe requirements of Canton Codified Ordinance Section 151.07, and declaring same to be an emergency.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Deb Houteschell, just as a reminder, she's the Assistant Superintendent of the WRF. What has happened here is unexpectedly, our WRF Superintendent Mark Morgan has had to be off work for several weeks. Generally thinking, we're able to pursuant to Codified Ordinance 15107H, allow employees to have up to 10 days vacation paid out at 90%. This has to be submitted to the auditor prior to October 1st. Ms. Houteschell did not make a submission to me prior to October 1st because she was planning on being off. However, since Mr. Morgan is out, we need Ms. Houteschell at the plant, and she has agreed to be there. So this is essentially just making her whole for her canceled vacation.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? Hearing none. We'll sign it out. Thank you. It is 7:27. That concludes the joint session of finance and personnel.
Public safety thoroughfares.
At 7:27, and I'd like to call to order the Public Thoroughfare, Public Safety and Thoroughfare Committee, and this is, first is the ordinance 17, an ordinance vacating a portion of Robin Court Southeast, approving and accepting the replat of the park out of the lots of 297, 305, 306, and 307, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of council, this vacation and replat will allow for the sale and transfer of the outlots from Stark Metropolitan Housing Authority to Sarda. Sarda will then construct in addition to their existing garage, which is located in Ward
Are there any questions on this? Then we'll move on. I'd like to also read ordinance 18, an ordinance approving and accepting the replat of lots 41838, 41839, and the outlots 991, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of council, this replat will allow for these parcels to be split into two parcels. One will be a 3.14 acre parcel, the other will be a .656 acre parcel. Early on, Coler Coatings had the opportunity to expand their business. They successfully have done that, and now they have a desire to sell the .656 acre property. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Are there any questions on this order? If we don't have any questions, then I'd like to sign this out at 7:29.
Thank you.
That concludes Public Thoroughfare, Public Safety and Thoroughfare Committee.
Council is reconvening after the recess. Leader.
Mr. President, I now move to 22A be suspended to add ordinances 16 through 20 back to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend rule twenty-two A to place ordinances sixteen through twenty and back on this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinances sixteen through twenty are a legal part of your agenda, leader.
My move that we suspend state statute of ordinances sixteen through twenty for third reading.
No, we're good.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the statutory rules on ordinances sixteen through twenty. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
You've heard the three readings, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number sixteen. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number sixteen is adopted, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number seventeen. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance number seventeen is adopted, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number eighteen. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance number eighteen is adopted, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number nineteen. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance number nineteen is adopted, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that you adopt ordinance number twenty. Are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance number twenty is adopted. We are now under ordinances and formal resolutions for their second reading. Mr. Clerk, would you please begin with ordinance number twenty-one?
Ordnance, amending ordinance number one hundred slash twenty-eleven as amended to establish the attached exhibit as classification plan for the Civil Service Commission Management and non-bargaining personnel employed by the City of Canton and declaring same to be an emergency. Number twenty-two, an ordinance authorized the mayor director of public service to advertise C-Biz award and enter into contract for the purchase of two pickup trucks or to alternatively purchase said vehicles pursuant to any cooperative purchasing agreement authorized by law and declaring same to be an emergency. Twenty-three, ordinance authorized the mayor director of public service or director of public safety to apply for, enter into agreement for, and receive funds from multiple potential funding sources of the various city projects and declaring same to be an emergency. Twenty-four, ordinance authorized the mayor director of public service to advertise C-Biz award and enter into contract for the sale of city-owned real property knowns no longer needed for municipal purposes located at Stark County Auditor, parcel number two forty-six zero two four, to enter into all contracts necessary to facilitate said sale and declaring same to be an emergency. Number twenty-five, an ordinance authorized the mayor and/or directors of public service and safety to advertise C-Biz award and enter into various contracts for supply equipment items, materials, supplies, and services pursuant to Codified Ordinance Section one oh five point zero nine, entering professional services contracts pursuant to Codified Ordinance Section one oh five point one zero, entering the contract pursuant to O.R.C. Section seven thirty-five point zero five, qualified nonprofit agencies entering the contract for the purchase of supply equipment, items, materials, supplies, and services utilizing any purchasing process authorized by either the O.R.C. or Canton Codified Ordinance and entering change orders and/or contract amendments for said purchases during the twenty twenty-one calendar year and declaring same to be an emergency. Mr. President.
For the council members that are at home right now, we're hearing a lot of back chatter, so I'm not quite sure.
I can hear it too, I don't.
I'm not quite sure who it is, but if we could try to tone that down, that would be greatly appreciated. We are now under ordinances and formal resolutions for their third final reading and vote. Mr. Clerk, please begin with ordinance number twenty-six.
Ordnance authorized the mayor director of public safety to enter into parking incentive agreement with Stark Metropolitan Housing Authority declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number twenty-six. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker.
Aye.
Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number twenty-six is adopted, ordinance number twenty-seven, please.
Ordnance amending Section one fifty-one point one zero health and welfare benefits of Part One of the Administrative Code of Canton Codified Ordinances.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty-seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number twenty-seven. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number twenty-seven is adopted, ordinance number twenty-eight, please.
Ordnance authorizing the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinances Canton, Ohio, declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number twenty-eight is adopted, ordinance number twenty-nine, please.
Ordnance authorized the mayor director of public safety to amend professional services agreement contract number twenty eighteen dash eighty-four and declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twenty-nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number twenty-nine is adopted, ordinance number thirty, please.
Ordnance authorized the mayor director of public safety to accept the twenty twenty dash D.J.-B.X.-zero-six-six-four Edward Byrne Memorial Grant amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Advertise C-Biz award and enter into contract for the purchase of cloud storage or to alternatively purchase said cloud storage pursuant to any procurement process authorized by law, authorizing the higher to create fund twenty-seven ninety-four twenty twenty Edward Byrne Memorial Grant Fund amending appropriation ordinance number fifty-nine slash twenty twenty declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number thirty.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty. Are there any remarks, leader?
Mr. President, I move we amend ordinance number thirty by the amendment before every council member.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number thirty per the copy before each of you. Are there any remarks? Leader.
Voice vote.
Well, Law Director, can you, uh?
What happened? No.
Law Director, can you please have the amendment explained, please?
Uh, Law Director, I can, I can explain this.
Or Safety Director.
Sure. Mr. President, members of council, what needed to be corrected on before the amendment is that the fund number was incorrect, so it had to be changed. The supplemental appropriations are listed as well as they, there was a balance already in an account that it needed to be changed to, so it needed to have an inter-fund transfer of funds to be utilized.
Thank you, Safety Director. Are there any additional remarks? Hearing none by voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number thirty as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty as amended. Are there any remarks under this ordinance as amended? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
The motion carries an ordinance number thirty as amended has been adopted, ordinance number thirty-one, please.
Ordnance authorized the mayor director of public service to accept the donation of land from on any sea pole and declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number thirty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-one. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number thirty-one has been adopted, ordinance number thirty-two, please.
Ordnance authorized the mayor director of public service to sign a petition for annexation for the parcels listed in Exhibit A and declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number thirty-two.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number thirty-two is adopted, ordinance number thirty-three, please.
Resolution proving a statement of services to be provided to the property owner in the Canton Services Center, thirtieth Street Northeast, Annexation Area, approximate date services will be provided, procedure to reconcile incompatible zoning uses upon us being annexed to the City of Canton, Ohio, declaring same to be an emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number thirty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-three. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Smucker, Babcock, Showman.
Aye.
Hawke, Kimbrough.
Aye.
Scaglion, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, Morris.
Aye.
Twelve yeas, Mr. President.
Motion carries an ordinance number thirty-three has been adopted.
Point of Order Resolution Thirty-three.
Thank you, Clerk Doherty. We are now under announcement of committee meetings.
Mr. President.
Member Murrell.
Finance will meet December fourteenth at six fifteen in council chambers.
Thank you, Member Murrell.
Mr. President.
Member Scaglion.
Public property capital improvement will meet the same time, same place.
Thank you, Member Scaglion.
Mr. President.
Member Babcock.
Personnel will meet same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Babcock.
Mr. President.
Member Hawke.
Thank you. Annexation Committee will meet the same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hawke.
Mr. President.
Member Fisher.
Environmental and public utilities will meet the same time, same place.
Thank you, Member Fisher. Public safety and thoroughfares.
Public safety and thoroughfares will meet the same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kimbrough. We are now under miscellaneous business. Is there any miscellaneous business for this evening?
Um, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Want to confirm this, Clerk Doherty? This is the last council meeting for the year, is that correct?
Yep, one more, yep. Yep, the fourteenth.
This will be the last council meeting, anything that needs passed before the end of the year will be passed on that day.
We don't, Member Smucker, we're in midterm, so we don't.
I understand, but I mean, it just, if you need it before the end of the year, you need to get it passed. Because we won't meet again till after the first of the year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I'm saying, I realize this isn't midterm, but if you need something for before the end of the year, especially when it comes to the budget, we need to get it done now.